I now call this regular meeting of the Rosemont City Council to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No ma'am.
All right. If not, would someone like to move to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Freski, second by Tyson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Next up, we've got item number three, Presentations, Proclamations, and Acknowledgements. We'll start with item A, Recognition of Retiring Firefighter Greg Zino and Captain Brad Miller. I'll turn it over to Chief Springer.
Mayor Kemple. And council members, thank you for giving us an opportunity tonight to stand up here and to really proudly celebrate the retirement of two of our very distinguished members of our department, firefighter Greg Zino and Captain Brad Miller, who each served 22 years on our department. Both Greg and Brad joined the fire department in January of 2003 as part of a group of 14 new hires at that time. And as you can imagine, with just one fire station, making a first out truck was a challenge. Yet from those very humble beginnings, they helped to build a strong foundation that our department stands on today. Their legacy is one of commitment, service above self, and a genuine passion for the fire service. And I would say for both of them, it was more than just responding to fire calls. During Greg Zino's tenure, he served as both a training officer and a truck lieutenant. He was involved in recruitment programming efforts, partnering to bring in new uniformed vendors, and even served on the grant committee for the Dakota Communications Center. Even in retirement, he is still serving others through his efforts in training service dogs with Soldier Six, which is an organization that provides service dogs free of charge to first responders and veterans. During his entire tenure, he was one of those firefighters who was always in the top tier of the percentage requirements. Only once or twice, I think, as he told me, maybe somebody actually beat him out on his call percentages. And I can give you an example, and this is one of those things that I had an opportunity to witness on Greg's last day here, which happened to be July 4th, a holiday, Greg still responded to calls just like he always had. Knowing that retirement was just hours away, percentage requirements really didn't matter anymore, he still showed up, right? Not for recognition, not for paycheck, but because he cared, because it's what he had always done. That's devotion, right? That is leading by example and a true love for the job. Captain Brad Miller's many contributions to this department speak volumes about his character and his leadership. Over the course of his 22 years, Brad devoted 16 of them as a member of the Dakota County Special Operations Team, and he also served as a member of Minnesota Task Force One, which added hundreds of additional hours to his already significant commitment to public Brad also took an active role in shaping the future of our department. He served on numerous truck committees and played a vital role in the development of our second fire station, dedicating countless hours to ensure its success. Brad served as a lieutenant and spent the last 12 years leading as a well-respected station captain. He was deeply involved in training, and he generously shared his knowledge and experience as both an instructor and a mentor. His passion for professional development and excellence has had a long-lasting effect on every firefighter he's worked with. As a new chief here, I remember witnessing Brad's leadership in action one evening during our training and truck checks. Someone came up and pointed out an issue with a piece of equipment that wasn't secured correctly. Brad took one look at it, he stopped everything that was happening at the station, called everyone over to talk about the issue, talk about the impact it could have had, and how to properly secure that equipment in the future. Brad was the kind of captain that wasn't afraid to take charge, he was willing to have that uncomfortable conversation with people, but do it in a professional manner to make sure that everyone learned the right way. I knew quickly that Captain Miller was an asset to our leadership team. His legacy is one of service, integrity, and leadership. His impact on this department and the people within it is truly indelible. To both firefighters Zino and Captain Miller, we thank you for your selfless service, your leadership, and the many lasting contributions that you've made to the Rosemont Fire Department. Because of your dedication, the department is stronger and the community is safer. Your legacy will be felt for years to come. And to Katie and the entire Miller family, and to Cheryl and the entire Zino family, thank you for your sacrifices that you've made in support of their calling. We know that being a firefighter is not a solo journey. It is a family commitment. Your unwavering support made it possible for Greg and Brad to live their dreams of serving others, and for that, we are deeply grateful. And I would just say congratulations to both of you on your retirement.
Would you like to take some pictures or anything before we let you go?
Do you guys like to come in?
Come on up, guys.
Are they both have an opportunity to say something?
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
Shark guy in the middle. You remember when we were up here, 20 some years ago?
Thank you for the recognition, really appreciate that. You know, when people retire, a lot of people, well, most people don't miss their job. They miss the people. And as a firefighter, we're blessed that we're going to miss our job and we're going to miss our people, because they're family. So, that's been somewhat profound, and I'll just correct one thing, it's been 22 and a half years. And these last six months were hard-earned, I would say. And for me personally, watching one of our own firefighters and a friend and a colleague that came on with us come back to life in the back of an ambulance in our own house was quite profound. So, these last six months will be something in my career that I'll remember forever. So, thank you all for coming, I really appreciate it.
Like Chief Springer said, one of 14, that was a lot of challenges there. But, and I lived across town, so where the news station is that way, and I still seem to beat most everybody there. But, in running night calls, I mean, to me, it was my bread and butter. I'm, for the last 10 years, we've been up north every weekend and still maintain a high volume or percentage on my calls, so I take pride in that. I love teaching, so thank you to everybody I've worked with over the years, and we'll miss you.
Thank you both for your professionalism and your service, and I know Rosemont's a better town because of both of you and people like you, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next we move on, we've got item B, a Leprechaun Days update. I'll turn it over to Parks and Recreation Director Dan Schultz.
Good evening, Acting Mayor and council members. Along with me tonight is David Chumley. Most of you know David through his years in our AAA and volunteering throughout the community, but he is now heading up the Leprechaun Days Committee. And as I think all of you know, Leprechaun Days is right around the corner. This is the time of year where Rosemont really comes together to celebrate our community. There's a week full of events and activities that David and his committee put together, and I think you'll see people of all ages taking part from Saturday to Saturday. There's all kinds of activities, and like I say, David is one of the people who heads that up, great leader, someone who has vision for our community as far as getting people involved and getting people on the committee to volunteer. And so, with that, David is going to give an update on this year's event.
Thanks, Dan. I'm not sure about everything Dan said there, but we'll go with it. Thanks, council members, for having us tonight. On behalf of the committee, I just want to say thanks for everything that the city puts into it, from resources and all of the staff that help with Leprechaun Days. I know the committee does a lot of the planning, but we really couldn't do it without the financial support and the resource support from all the departments of the city allows us to utilize, from the police to the fire department, to Dan's group, to communications, everyone takes a part in this great event. We're happy to keep doing that, like, it does kick off this Saturday again with the usual run for the gold and then the fire, the breakfast of the fire station. Then Thursday night, when Midsummer Fair kicks off, we're starting it off with the car show again. So, last year was the first year for the car show. It turned out to be a bigger event than what we thought, so we're doing that again. I think we have like 55 cars registered currently or something. And then, following the car show, we'll have the Belfast Cowboys again up on the main stage. Those two kind of went hand-in-hand last year, the car show fanatics, I guess, really liked the Belfast Cowboys, and so we had a great turnout. We're going to go with that again and see how we do. Then Friday night, from the entertainment perspective, we have the band The Good, The Bad, and The Funky, kind of a ensemble sort. And then, Saturday, we have two bands, we're changing it up a little bit this year, we're having the Northerly Gales Band, an Irish band, that'll be performing in the Beer Garden from like 3:30 to 6 o'clock. And then Saturday night, down at the amphitheater, we have Uncle Chuck performing, Uncle Chunk performing as the main stage down there. So, trying to add a little bit to the afternoon activities there from the Midsummer Fair perspective. We have a couple new food trucks this year with some of the changes, we have a little more space, so Waffle Bar and the Egg Roll Queen will be there this year for some additional food choices. And then Fireside, I forgot to mention Fireside, they'll be, Fireside Bar and Grill will be the main spot, or the main vendor at the Beer Garden this year, so we'll have Fireside that's replacing the Clover. And then we have North 20, Omni, and Lost Ortiz with their Margarita trailer again this year, so I'm excited to have Lost, or I'm sorry, Fireside in there for the first time this year. I know we've been working with Kim, and he's really excited to be able to do this and has some creative ideas around things he wants to try there, so we'll see what happens there. And then Saturday, the parade, can't forget about the parade there. And then the fireworks Saturday night that everyone really looks excited for. But, a couple of the other changes that we're implementing, we've been working with Chief Dahlstrom on some public safety issues, or not issues, policies to help enforce a safe environment for everybody, so we're going to implement a clear bag policy this year for the event, as well as, we're, they're putting some fencing around it to kind of control the entrances, so it won't be a free-for-all where everyone's coming from, and then we'll be able to, you know, do the clear bag policy a little more effective. So, a couple of changes to help with just with, you know, public safety and make sure everyone has a safe, fun time at the event, so.
Small question on the clear bag policy. I know a lot of women and girls in the community, like myself, like to carry those Lululemon belt bags that are really small, are those allowed?
Yep, yep. That was the last hurdle that we just got through, and those, you can still bring your Lululemon, I call them fanny packs, I don't know what the real term is, but belt bag, okay?
I think that's because Chief has one of those, so I...
If it is smaller than 6 by 9 inches, it'll be good.
Yes. And we'll have some bags there at the entrances for people who don't see the communication or show up with, and there's exceptions, there, we have the policy out there for diaper bags, medical bags, things of that nature, so.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you for all your work you put in this, it's an amazing community event. By sheer coincidence, last year, my brother-in-law and nephew were in town for Saturday of Leprechaun Days, and I dragged them to it, and they're like, "What's Leprechaun Days?" And I said, "Oh, it's like a community festival, like you guys have in Waukees, Iowa." And as we walked down the hill behind Shamrock Animal Hospital, my brother-in-law stopped in his tracks, and he said, "This is nothing like the community event in Waukees, Iowa."
On steroids here.
Yes, definitely on steroids.
Yes, it is, for sure, yes.
And then I'd be remiss not to also give a call out to our fellow council member, Heidi Freski, who I know puts a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into Leprechaun Days planning as well, and is our liaison to the committee, so thank you, Heidi, so much for it, all you do.
She's a double agent, for sure.
She's our secret weapon, pretty sure of it.
Appreciate it.
The only thing I want to remind people of, and I don't know if you mentioned it, but we do have a website, leprechandays.org, and so all of our events are out there, schedules, and if anything changes, it'll be communicated, as well as a very active social media presence, both on Facebook and Instagram, so we'll be pushing out pictures every day after all the events, any weather happenings that may occur will also be posted on in social media.
That's great.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks guys, thanks for everything.
Thanks. Best time of year in Rosemont? Okay. Next up, we've got item number four, response to public comments. So, Administrator Martin, do we have any comments to respond to at this time?
Thanks, mayor members of the council. Just the one comment received at last week's city council meeting was just a code enforcement violation that we're just working through with the property owner, but wanted to use an opportunity during the council meeting here to kind of describe our administrative citation program again that we have recently rolled out, just to help us work through some code enforcement issues that we, you know, unfortunately have to deal with from time to time in the city, and so, a process that allows kind of an enforcement action to take place inside the bounds of our city processes and not utilize the legal court system. This person is not involved in that directly yet, but just an example of what we can do, that if we need to amplify conversations with residents on code enforcement issues, we can choose to do that via the administrative citation process. And so, just a reminder to residents, we're just, we're always looking to work with them and help them navigate code enforcement, as it's a sticky wicket and a lot of things to figure out, so it's always a conversation. But, just a reminder also on that admin citation process that we're working through, so that's it that we have.
All right, thanks, thank you, Mr. Martin. All right. Next up, we have public comment. If anyone would like to address the council about items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, this is your time to do so. We ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then typically replies to the comments will be made via letter or phone call within a week or at the following council meeting. So with that, I'll open the floor for public comment. Please come forward to the podium if you have something.
Hello, my name is Sam Adams, I live at 13704 Atrium Avenue. This comes at four minutes, I time myself, so I'd appreciate, if one minute is okay, I would appreciate that.
I'll allow it.
Okay, thank you. Behind me is family, friends, and our attorney, Adam. I spoke with you on June 17th, I'm here to go on record to elaborate the issues of fairness that my family believes are a significant problem with the stormwater trunk fees as they are currently applied. You should have each received a more detailed summary of our position that also addresses some of the mischaracterizations that were used by the city in the official response to our original open comment and accompanying letter. First, I would like to thank Adam, I'm sorry I don't know how to pronounce your last name, so I wasn't kind or keen, I'm unsure, I appreciate the time you've put in, as well as Anthony Nemchek, for the significant time they have invested on behalf of the city. Also, we would like to take this time to acknowledge that we understand and appreciate that systems cannot be perfect. With that, we ask, all we ask is that in situations in which this imperfection is obvious, that reasonableness and fairness preside. Rosemont has experienced much growth in the past few decades. Much of the residential growth has consisted of relatively higher density housing developments as compared to the lesser dense rural land in other areas of the city. One of the issues with such growth is that as it continues to happen in such a manner, the assumption for what future growth will look like tends to be in the direction of more density and not less. I think the factualness of this is evident. To my knowledge, there are no areas where rural residential development with the need for public infrastructure is consistently happening in the city of Rosemont. The contrary seems to be the fact, excuse me. This is not to disparage this type of higher density development. Land is a scarce commodity and is only becoming scarcer. Our concern is that due to the assumption of higher density growth, it is easy for policy to become directionally applied and also biased towards higher density development. This places undue burden upon those such as us who only wish to keep land in the family. In 2022, when our resolution was adopted, there was notice sent to those nearby about the proposed subdivision of our land. This understandably caused concern within the neighborhood, as many thought we were going to sell to a developer. When it was made clear by my father that no, the land is staying in the family, there was obvious relief. This is because the reasonable people that our neighbors are understand the difference between a family managing the natural progression of an estate and a company buying and then subdividing land to be developed and then sold for a profit. They are two distinctly different things, we ask the city acknowledge that. We are different, and our situation is different from the normal pattern of development in Rosemont. Precedent already exists in which the city has granted a reduction in fees based on standard of fairness, given the requirement for comparative infrastructure needs. There are at least three instances in which relief was granted to property owners in this manner. Specifically regarding stormwater, appendix, and language states, and I will restate this from last time. The implementation of this fee will allow new developments to pay for the trunk infrastructure improvements that are needed to accommodate the new development. Failure to implement this fee would result in all taxpayers in the city paying for the cost of developments that are for the most part only developing newly, excuse me, newly benefiting, newly developing areas. Considering these factors together, it is clear that the city will adjust fees based upon the amount of stormwater infrastructure required. In our case, we require no such infrastructure. It then follows, that if the fee is based upon the amount of infrastructure required for a project, and ours required none, there should be no fee. This requires no timely and expensive recalculation of rates for certain areas and provides a simple solution to instances such as ours. In this situation, zero is a very special number. Also, in the Stormwater Trunk Fee Justification Report, Section 3, it states, the area, it states the area in which our family owns land is located within what the document refers to as Area 1, previously developed area. It then says, "This acreage is not included in the trunk conveyance and pawning fee calculations as it is unlikely revenue will be generated from land in this area. The implications of this are manifold. All arguments by the city against the granting of relief in this and in similar situations due to potentially causing budget shortfalls are negated by this statement. Granting a relief will not change net outlays and do nothing except acknowledge that there are situations to which this fee structure was never meant to apply. Our formal letter to city council further elaborates our position and outlines our request. We thank you for our time, or your time and attention in this manner. Thank you."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before council this evening?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jackie Young, I live at 12895 Bengal Avenue in Rosemont. I've been to these, I've been an active member of the community, and I've been to these council meetings before. Tonight, I'm here not only as a Rosemont citizen, but also as a representative for Dakota County Opioid Response Committee. And actually, the chief of police helped me get on that committee. Along with the Minnesota Department of Health and with the support of our Dakota County Board of Commissioners, the committee is beginning a multifaceted awareness campaign against opioids and other substances. In the month of August, there are several recognized events that happen, including August 21st, National Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day, and August 31st, International Overdose Awareness Day. Therefore, our committee is hoping to get all of the, about 10 of the major cities in Dakota County to make a proclamation in August for Overdose and Fentanyl Poisoning Awareness Month. In addition, we are hoping to light up a building in each city in purple and host a vigil on August 31st. All the logistics for that haven't been figured out yet. Fentanyl poisoning is now the leading cause of death in Americans from ages 18 to 45. In 2024, almost 1,000 Minnesotans lost their lives to fentanyl and other drugs. The city of Rosemont lost two community members in 2024, and in 2021, I lost my 30-year-old son, Michael, from Rosemont to this epidemic. So, I'm here kind of hoping that the city will work with the Dakota County Committee. It's time for some action and advocacy to save lives, and I hope to work further on this.
Okay. Thank you for coming, Jackie. Does city staff have your contact information to follow up with you? Yes?
Yeah.
We were emailing today, Jackie and I were, so yeah, we'll keep in touch, and Chief knows her very well too, so thanks, thanks Jackie.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak before council this evening? All right. This is the part where I say seeing, is no one's making a mad dash? We will close public comment. Next up, we have consent agenda, which this evening includes A, bill listings, B, minutes of the July 1, 2025 regular meeting minutes, minutes of the July 1, 2025 work session proceedings, a donation acceptance from Spectral Alloys in support of our fire department, a donation acceptance from Wayne Transports, Inc., also in support of our fire department, an F to declare fire smokehouse trailer as surplus property, item G is to adopt parking restrictions on Conomera Trail East, item H, authorization for temporary street closings and adding of events to service agreement, and that's for various Leprechaun Days events and activities. Item I, approve an encroachment agreement with MI Homes for a monument sign for Alder Glen at Amber Fields. Item J is item 2026-01, the Street Improvement Plan Engineering Services and Feasibility Report. Item K, Carimore Crossing 3 Edition, accepting improvements. And item L, terminate 2023 Neighborhood Improvement Contract. Is there anything on the consent agenda that council members would like to pull?
D and E. D and E, right?
D and E? All right. We've got items D and E pulled. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus items D and E?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Freski, a second by Tyson. Roll call, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Kemple?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Next up, let's pull up item D, items D and E, I'll call Chief Springer up to talk a little bit about these donations coming into the fire department and our fire safety programs.
Mayor and council, regarding those two items that you spoke of, item D, which was the donation from Spectral Alloys, and item E, which was a donation from Wayne Transports, we work with an organization called the National Fire Safety Council, and they send out notifications to businesses in our community to solicit donations that help provide public safety education in our community. In these two cases, when they send those letters out, normally the checks will be written out to the National Fire Safety Council on behalf of the Rosemont Fire Department, the checks get sent to us, and then we turn them over to the National Fire Safety Council. In these two cases, these two businesses chose to write the checks to the Rosemont Fire Department, so we will accept those donations, and then we will send those to the National Fire Safety Council. That goes, when you, when we get to October for Fire Prevention Week, most of the materials that go out to the schools, all of the educational materials, all of that is purchased through those... those donation funds. The other larger item there, which if it's all right to mention as well, which was in regards to item 6F, also on there, the donation from Spectral Alloys, more specifically, that was an item that helped us to to purchase a new inflatable fire safety house. So just to offer, if I could, a quick background on that one. For a little over 25 years, thanks to an original donation from Flint Hills Resources, the fire department was able to purchase a trailer and build a smokehouse prop. And for the last several decades, we've used this to educate youth on how to get out of a house that might be on fire. It was a great tool, served, you know, a wonderful amount of fire prevention and outreach to our community for decades. But after a couple of decades of use, that original smokehouse that we had really started to experience some significant wear and tear, exposure to the elements, technology updates, and unfortunately, over the winter, some critters who decided to make that their home and caused some additional damage, really led to some very costly repairs to bring that up to speed. So while we were evaluating some options, we found what really is a more modern, updated version, which is a more inflatable-style fire safety house. This is a prop that will allow us to expand our outreach, will be able to take that into schools and the community centers, and actually set it up in a gymnasium as opposed to it being outside, just give us a chance to reach a broader audience. Around the same time that we were doing that is when we were learning of this donation from Spectral Alloys as an opportunity to put towards the cost of that. So that's why that, both of those items are on your consent agenda tonight. I hope that provided some clarification.
That's that's exciting, and we're so thankful for our community partners who step up to the plate and and help us modernize things like this at the department. So thank you so much for sharing that added detail.
All right.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of the 1,750 dollars from Spectral Alloys support in the fire safety house used to provide fire safety education in the community.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Tyson, a second by Freski. Roll, please.
Clumpel?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Okay, and we still have item E.
Yeah, this is a motion to approve the acceptance of $105 check from Wayne Transports, Incorporated, to be used for fire safety education materials.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Tyson, a second by Freski. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Clumpel?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Next up, we have public hearings. Here we've got item A, Amendment to the Spending Plan for the Tax Increment Financing Downtown Brockway District. I will turn this over to Community Development Director Keenberger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Little bit of background on this, and then noting that staff is requesting that this item be continued to your August 19th meeting. So as a part of the most recent Minnesota State Legislative Special Session, a law was approved that enabled cities to have extra time on their TIF spending plans, and one of the things that the Port Authority is tasked with discussing is how we want to update and amend our TIF spending plan to allow additional flexibility to accommodate that that flexibility granted through state statute. So with that, because that was not discussed at the Port Authority meeting this evening, we're recommending that that be discussed at the Port Authority's next regular meeting on August 19th, and then be brought forward for consideration by the City Council at your regular meeting on August 19th. Just noting that the action on the memo states fourth, which is the City Council's next regular meeting, but I would ask that it be noted as August 19th for that continuance.
Okay, so first up, it sounds like then we need a motion to open the public hearing this evening?
So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing and motion to continue the public hearing at the August 19th regular meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Tyson and a second by Freski. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Clumpel?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
There we go. Moving right along, item eight is unfinished business, and we don't have anything in that category this evening. So now we'll move to number nine, new business, Aspen Fields Land Use Plan Amendment, rezoning, and plat approval requests. And again, I'll turn this over to Community Development Director Keenberger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. On a bit of a similar note, before I get into a little bit of the background here, staff is requesting that this item be continued to your next regular meeting on August 4th. This item is a request for a comprehensive land use amendment, and one of the requirements under state statute for comprehensive land use plan amendments is that if there were a motion to seek approval, it does need a super majority of the City Council, which would require a four-fifths vote. Being that there are only three of you present this evening, staff is recommending that this item be continued to your August 4th regular meeting.
All right, do we have a motion to continue this to their next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Freski, a second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Clumpel?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we're on item 10, announcements. So first of all, Logan Martin, any city staff updates to share this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Members of the Council. Thanks for your flexibility tonight on a little agenda swap there, just the continuation for the lack of a super majority. Appreciate that, and we'll jump back on that as we continue that conversation. I know you're going to flag some of the exciting things coming up with Leprechaun Days, and we already talked a bit about that, so I don't have anything to add there. So for sake of really good filler, I'm going to say that it's one of Rosemont resident, one of Rosemont's finest residents' birthdays today, who happens to serve as our Parks and Recreation Director, so Mr. Dan.
Happy birthday.
And there's nowhere he'd rather be than serving his community on his birthday. So thanks, Dan, happy birthday, and we'll turn it back to you.
All right, what a great update. We like that. And nobody volunteered to sing happy birthday to you, so we're sparing you that pain this evening.
That's your gift.
Yep. All right, moving forward to item B, the upcoming community calendar. Super cool, exciting stuff. Our favorite week of the year in Rosemont's about to be here, and some of the festivities actually kind of kick off. We've got a splash pad celebration on the 17th, so this Thursday, join our youth commissioners at Central Park from 11:00 to noon, and meet all of those great youth commissioners stepping up to be our future leaders. We've got Saturday, a little plug again for Run for the Gold, was mentioned by David Chumbly, but I've run that a couple times in my own past. I will not be running it this year, but it's a four-mile run, a one-mile run, and a kid's fun run, and so that's always a fun way to kick off Leprechaun Days. And then afterwards, you can head on over to Fire Station Number One. The Rosemont Fire Department is hosting the Waffle and Sausage Breakfast from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on Saturday. Also on Saturday, the 19th, we have the Rib Fest and Grilling Competition, which you may hear of as called Grill Your Ace Off. Mayor Weisensahl and I will be there judging baby back ribs, and so I'm already Googling judging techniques and all that good stuff. It's serious business, guys.
Like how to chew the rib, or?
Like it's presentation and texture.
Wow.
There's actually, there's a.
A lot that goes into it.
It really is, so.
And the song? I got my baby back, baby back, right?
There is a song.
All right, sorry. We're singing, we're singing. All right, okay.
Okay. And then also of note, the Regular Planning Commission meeting for July 22nd is canceled. Our Parks and Natural Resources Commission will be meeting on July 28th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. We've got our next City Council Work Session and Regular and Regular Meeting on Monday, August 4th. Please note the updated time, five to, or updated date, rather, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. for the Work Session, and then 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. for the City Council Meeting. That being moved, of course, for August 5th is Night to Unite, also a favorite night of the year around these parts, and so a plethora of neighborhood parties. If you haven't registered your neighborhood's Night to Unite event with us yet, please visit the city website and get on that. The police stop by, but the fire department always stops by and steals their thunder with, you know, fun water and stuff for the kids, but we do what we can do, so anyway.
They flush our lights.
Yes, they flush some lights and make some noise, all that good stuff. So that concludes like our upcoming council calendar.
Ma'am, could I just do a quick go back? I'm sorry, we we had a Port Authority meeting tonight, out on site at the Speedway site, and so if you folks want to talk about what's upcoming this week and what residents might see out there?
Yeah, the our regular Port Authority meeting was moved to a special location this evening at the former Speedway site. That's everyone's favorite lot in town.
This was, yeah, this was something that was that was kind of near and dear to our heart and kind of fun to actually take some some large hammers and pickaxes and and start the deconstruction, because this week, tomorrow, you'll see some major movement on that lot where the trees and all the ancillary items around the building are going to be taken down tomorrow, and then.
Was it Thursday the building's being demolished?
Yep, Thursday, Friday.
So you'll see a lot of activity on that lot this week, and it's super exciting. Just I know it's a very visible intersection in town. Quite a lot of us, regardless of what part of town we live in, we find us find ourselves driving through that intersection quite regularly, especially with the high school so close by, so we're really excited to resolve this issue finally after a long and protracted bankruptcy and receivership process, and finding a way to shepherd this forward into some form of future development as some kind of an amenity in the community. We're really looking forward to residents' input. We don't know what's going in there, and so we want to hear from residents, and the first opportunity will be at Leprechaun Days at the Midsummer Fair. The city will have a tent or booth there, per usual, and we'll be asking for your ideas of what you want to see in the former Speedway site, so please engage with us there. We'll have other opportunities to engage as well, so keep an eye out, and it's exciting. You've never seen so many city council members so happy to have sledgehammers and fixing the access.
And 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 Council, Council Member Freski was very adamant that that was cleaned and wiped out and ready for the Leprechaun Days Parade, so so good news there that it will be ready to put blankets and all kinds of different festive lawn chairs to watch the parade in that new city lot.
Yep, so awesome. Thank you for the callback of Logan, appreciate that. And with no other items to come before us this evening, I believe we're up to an adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'll oppose. We are adjourned. Thank you, Rosemont.